Product focus and and cultural relations, you know.
I'd like to call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Special Public Meeting Board Retreat this Thursday, today, December 5th. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will, well, I guess, will, won't be. Never mind. Please strike that. Yes, can I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Salda?
Here.
Dr. Coleman? Can she respond? I'll come back to her. Uh, Dr. Pixley?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman? Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ms. Vardeman? Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Dr. Coleman, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
I'll stand for the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, we're going to proceed to our only agenda item for this evening, which is a discussion to enhance and modify our board's committee structure. I'd like to introduce Mary Ann Friedman, who is our, um, Senior Field Service Representative from the NJ SBA.
Yay, thank you.
Tess, Tess.
With this, I think, the self-evaluation?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Mary Ann Friedman, and I am a Senior Field Service Representative with New Jersey School Boards. And the good news about, well, just by way of introduction, I served on my local board for nine years, and this month I've been with the association fifteen years. So, um, I love what I do, and I'm really happy to be back in Middlesex County again. Um, I had Middlesex County from two thousand seventeen to twenty-two. So I'm really glad to be back. So the good news about committees is that you have this local control to be able to utilize committees in any way that you would like to. It should be a collaborative decision between the board and the superintendent, because we need to know from the superintendent's perspective if what we're planning on doing or what the board plans to do, or, uh, or even suggest to do, is something that the superintendent and the business administrator can work within the confines of. So that's why it really does need to be in collaboration. I'm going to apologize for my voice. I'm not sick. I do not have COVID. I wrecked my vocal cords last year by attending workshop and presenting five programs at workshop with laryngitis. And so when they tell you, don't speak when you have laryngitis, don't speak when you have laryngitis, okay? So we're going to go through these. So effective committees really can unify, represent, motivate, coordinate, consolidate, and communicate, and they function best when the members are selected appropriately and when a clearly defined mission exists. Strong leadership is key as well. You have so much paperwork in that committee effectiveness folder that you'll be able to look at over the course of time even and go back to. There's, um, a model, um, committee report form that's in there that you can look at. There's a committee effectiveness evaluation. So at the end of committee meetings, you can have those and see how people feel the committees are working, um, whether it's with your current committees or with something that you structured newly for the upcoming year. Okay, so we know the committee effect, that effective committees really meet clearly defined needs. They're established in an appropriate manner. They operate under clearly defined bylaws, and there's some information in there about developing a, a vision and a mission for your, your committees. Hopefully, they lessen the, the total work of all board members. Okay, so that's why we have, we, we talk about a three-committee, a three-master committee system, and we're going to talk about that. But again, it's up to you all as to how you feel and what you feel would be most appropriate for you. In a committee system, you're able to explore situations and recommendations and issues much further than you can if you were a board of the whole and talking, you know, about everything as a, as a total board in an open-public setting. So you can really investigate different things, and the board, um, each, each committee needs to have a committee administrative liaison. So there's usually, and the superintendent is one of the committee liaisons. Then usually the business administrator is another. If you have a Director of CNI of Curriculum and Instruction, they might be. If you have a Director of HR, they might be. So there are lots of different people, but those are folks that the superintendent will ask to be the, that administrative liaison, and the committee goes, they meet the committee's needs by having that dual responsibility, and their role in the district also mirrors what you would be talking about at the committee meeting, okay? Hopefully, they meet in a timely fashion, so we always suggest that these not be kind of willy-nilly, where, you know, this week you call, oh, we need a, an HR committee meeting on Tuesday, but have those structured timeframes to be able to allow people to put them in their calendar, so that just like board meetings, unless you have a specific need for a board meeting like you did for tonight, but you know when your meetings are, you know, first or third Monday, first or third Tuesday, whatever. Um, having an effective chairperson is also key. It also allows the board to develop board leadership positions. Because as chairperson, there's a little bit more that's expected of you in that leadership role, and that can help to bring people up to the fold to be a future president of the board or vice president. They also have a clearly defined reporting process, and so we recommend that within two days, that the meeting minutes, the committee meeting minutes, go out to everybody. Okay, in our process, and in any process that we would actually suggest that you use, whatever process you might use, we recommend that the agenda goes out to everybody, and then the minutes go out to everybody, because they're really a mechanism for the board to be able to look back and say, if you're not on that committee, to go back and say, how did this get here? And what were the conversations to it getting here? And then you can do that.
Can I ask, so you said two days for the notes. Is there a, a recommendation for the agenda in advance?
So it's going to depend. So we, and, and I know that's a common NJ SBA statement. It depends. But if you, it depends on what kind of structure your, your system is. So if you have three committee members, which you can do, the fourth seat could be open to anybody who wished to attend based on what the agenda was for that particular night. That would be on a first-come, first-served basis, and then we would suggest, usually after the minutes are distributed. And what I did as a committee chairperson, um, it was late in the game in my nine years, but we finally got things together towards the end of my boardsmanship. We would actually, at our committee meeting, develop the agenda for the next meeting before we left. And so then we could send out the minutes and the agenda. And then if there was a fourth person who wanted to attend curriculum and instruction or operations or something, because something was on there that they were interested in, they would call the, contact the chairperson and see if the fourth seat was taken yet. Okay, yes.
I was thinking the agenda is so much as what's happening by current, well, personnel and finance facilities particularly are like more currently what's happening, you know, hires, fires, open positions.
Right.
You know.
So some of those things and, and depend, it, it really does depend. I, I'm, we're going to talk.
Those two are more dependent on administration rather than on.
Right.
The poor people, I think.
Right. So, okay, so, and boards, uh, and committees always make recommendations to the full board. They generally don't have the authority to approve anything as a committee. So even some people will say, well, what about negotiations? Even negotiations, you're, the board is giving them parameters to work with, and they can, they allow them or give them the authority to, um, to approve a tentative memorandum of agreement, but then that still has to come to the board for a full ratification, okay? So what we're going to talk about tonight, some of this is legal information, but it's not legal advice. So if you need, ever needed legal advice on any of these things, you would contact your board attorney. Okay, that's our standard. This is not legal advice. So the three master committees that we espouse are, the board president would appoint the following standing committees. There would be a committee on curriculum and instruction or committee on education, committee on finance and physical plant or operations, and then an HR committee. Ad hoc committees would be appointed as they were needed, and in this model, policies would go through any committee that they needed to touch. So policy could technically go through all three committees, okay? Some boards like that, some boards don't. So the general duties of the committees are that the meetings are going to be called by the chairperson. Did I skip a whole bunch of, no, okay, I thought this came after. Will be called by the chairperson, and hopefully you'll have a structure for those, just like you do for your board meetings. Everybody's advised of all the committee meetings, and they receive the agenda. President refers items to various committees for them to discuss and review. The superintendent selects the administrative liaisons, as I mentioned before, for each committee. The superintendent or the administrative liaison reviews those items, and sometimes they will bring things to the committee meeting also. Okay, the committee reviews and discusses all of those things and then brings a recommendation to the full board. All board members receive the committee agenda and the minutes. The committees report to the board within one month following each of their committee meetings, and committees recommend yea, nay, or no opinion to the board, okay? So the education committee is usually going to cover curriculum and instruction, special education, and things of that sort. So the administrative liaison is usually the administrative liaison for, or administrator for curriculum and instruction, and they oversee instruction and programs as well, and they attend all the committee meetings. So the things that they're, the committee, the education committee is going to think about are special ed, CNI, again, reviewing policies that could be related to curriculum and instruction and programs related to curriculum and instruction, and then they would make a recommendation to the full board. The operations committee, the administrative liaison, is going to be the business administrator, because they are the ones that are typically responsible for finance, facilities, transportation, and physical plant, and they're going, and that can include athletics as well. They're going to review processes to ensure financial oversight and monitoring, discuss transportation, building and grounds, and athletic policies and related plans. Board members may review the, the monthly bills before payment, auditing for proper protocol and, and process, validates receipts of purchase and correctness of the amount, propriety of the purchase, and then again makes recommendation to the full board. And the human resources committee, and this is the one that a lot of boards say, we don't want a human resources committee, we want the human resources to be done as a committee of the whole, because most of the time, that, a lot of that work is done in executive session anyway. So, and then if you don't have an, an HR committee, what several districts that I have worked with, to talk about committee effectiveness is, is they'll have a policy committee, and then HR is a board, they do as a board of the whole, okay? But for HR, this is a very high-level HR. It's not really a personnel committee, okay? You're not attending interviews and things like that, looking at resumes or applications. That's not within the role of the board. So you're going to be looking at job descriptions, at qualification of employees, remuneration, terms of service and other related matters, evaluation of teachers, if that comes up, the review of those procedures, and administrative structure and management improvement, and then would make recommendations again to the full board. So the benefits of the committee system really are that the agenda and all of the minutes go to every, every board member, so they can see what's going on. As I said, in the, the three master committees, there are three people on each committee, and then the fourth seat is open. So every board member has one committee that they sit on. And for a lot of boards, they like that, because a lot of boards that I work with have ten, eleven, and twelve committees. And so board members are on three or four committees. Yeah, no, thank you, right? So, you know, that's one of the reasons that this came about. And actually, when I was on my board, and I came off the board in two thousand eight to work at NJ SBA, we, the year, or two years before, we had our field service rep come in and talk to us about the three master committees, and we did find it to be very helpful, and we liked, it, it worked for us a lot. I either find as a field service rep that this either works really well for you, or it doesn't work at all. And it's absolutely okay, okay, because there's nothing that's tied to this that says you have to do this. It's up to you all to make that decision.
I was going to say, what doesn't, when it doesn't work, what, what is, what's the problem?
So sometimes it's because people aren't really reviewing the agendas, and they're not reviewing the minutes. You know, that's part of your role as a board member is to review your packet, and not everybody does that. So when they're not doing that, that's a problem. Um, and also sometimes, as I said, you know, uh, there, there were several boards that didn't like that the policies needed to go through every committee, because you could tie up a policy for, you know, a month or two.
So if you have a, a board that doesn't agree, that would be maybe something that, but they, I mean, if you have a, if you could get tied up in every, so, I mean, that could just like be a problem for.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about a circumstance. Angela, do you have somebody? Okay.
Oh, you recognizing my hand raised?
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Great. Um, so I, I guess, in this conversation or in this slide here, you're, you're, you're really, I think, hi- highlighting, um, the benefit, well, now you're at the benefits of the committee system. Uh, and I feel like we have been reaping the benefits of this system with our committee structure and our model that we have. I mean, clearly, we, we have, uh, more than three committees, but, uh, we, as a district, have prioritized equity and excellence, which is why that is its own separate committee. And we also implemented the, um, process of having policies, um, run through each committee as, um, as needed or as relevant, I guess, uh, which sounds to me, um, consistent with the model that you're recommending. Yes. I think my, uh, question would be about, and I, I don't know if we've gotten to this point yet, but in the case where, um, HR personnel issues become a committee of the whole, or that committee becomes a committee of the whole to be discussed in executive session, then that means we're adding a lot of time to our executive sessions. Because as it stands now, our executive session time, uh, the bulk of it is really dedicated towards like looking at discipline reports, HIB and so forth, um, which takes up quite a bit of time.
Sure. So, you know, generally, when, when the committee system is working well, the committee, the committees are meeting generally for about an hour. Sometimes it may be a little bit shorter than that. Operations is going to be a little bit longer during budget season. Um, but generally, they're going to be able to, to work, you know, for, within the hour. And I do realize that that can add to your, to your executive session. And actually, Allison and Marilyn put together, have put together a couple of different models that we can talk about. I just wanted to get through the, the committee system first as we espouse it, and then, but understand that also, we're going to, I mean, NJ SBA is never going to say, and I'm never going to say, well, that's a terrible idea. Because if it works for you, it's not terrible. It works, okay? So, um, so we will, we will get, that's Monique, right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I figured I was jumping ahead, so thank you.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's okay.
Can I ask a, a question as well? So you're going through these models, and what I'm curious about is, just, if you think about the state of New Jersey and who, who uses what model? And the percentage-wise, do we have any data?
We don't. We don't have any recent data, anyway.
But, well, recent data, do you have previous data? I'd love to see it.
I, I can't remember when the last time we did a survey about committees with boards.
Yeah.
But I can check with Communications Department tomorrow and see.
Yeah.
What we had. I think it might be like two thousand sixteen or seventeen.
Okay, so maybe not relevant, I mean, not relevant.
I know, boards have changed over a hundred times.
It's worthwhile to see, like, we're obviously going to come up with something customized for us that works, there's no doubt. Um, but it is useful, like, if, if, on average, like, this kind of, on average, if like this kind of things wor- work over that. So while you walk through this, I'd be very curious to get your kind of, like, in your observation over your, you know, fifteen, twenty years of experience, the things that you've seen work really well, you know, we, we don't have to have the data for it, but just to get your perspective on it while we're going through this, it can be really valuable.
I can pretty much answer that question, though. What works well for the board is what works pretty well.
Yeah, okay.
You know, because every board is different, and every board has different needs, and they have different wants about how they do things. So, you know, I usually will say, if you have a committee system that you feel works for you, it's not broke, don't, you know, the old saying, if it's not broke, don't fix it. But at the same token, if you want to look at other models, this is a good model to start off with. And then, as I said, Allison and Marilyn have kind of come, you know, come up with some different config, reconfigurations of this that I'm going to ask them to talk about when we get to that, and I think that they're all very valuable too, to consider. So it's not, you know, it's never going to be my way or NJ SBA's way or the highway. It's whatever works best for you. So a lot of times I go in and I talk about the, the three-master committee system, and then like a year later, somebody will say, well, we tried that for, you know, six months, but we, we modified it, and we really liked the way we modified it, and that's what's working. So sometimes it's completely by accident that I find out that what they ended up with is completely different. Okay? Okay, so again, the committee system is going to allow you to have a more in-depth view, review of certain topics and issues. It allows that leadership to develop, as I said before. They're organized, the meetings are organized and, and, um, really scheduled around the committee agenda. Um, meetings can occur monthly prior to meetings, so to your business, um, your board meetings. So what we did at one point was, we had, we had two meetings a month, and we had two committee meetings right before our board meeting for an hour. So board members for those two committees would get there at six o'clock, and then the board meeting would start at seven. And that, that can work really well, because you have a structure that you have to be in your board meeting at seven. So all of the different, like, off-topic things that sometimes happen during committee meetings cease, because you've really got a time limit to be able to do this in. And then the other committee meeting, because we had a, a small district, so the other committee meeting was, the committee liaison for two of the meetings was one person. So we couldn't have them meet at the same time, because we couldn't clone anybody, so we thought about it, but we couldn't do it. So, um, so that per, that person would then do the, their committee meeting the next time. But those two committee meetings ran concurrently with their committee liaisons, okay? It can provide more efficiency to the board and to the board meetings. It's a higher level of discussion than at board meetings. You don't have to do a full committee report of reiterating everything that happened in the committee meeting, because you've already distributed the minutes, and you're going to talk about the things that are on the agenda for that night, and that you're going to be asking the board to approve or to look at. And then, you know, it allows, um, people to explore more issues at one particular time.
I'm sorry, just for the distributing the minutes, is that for just us, or is that for public?
So generally, the committee meeting minutes are distributed to the board members, and then the committee chair will give a, um, a recap. But it's not a full, if you're, if you're fully going through every committee meeting, then you should be a board of the whole, because you're, you know, you're having a committee meeting, and then you're coming back and you're telling everybody exactly, word for word, what happened during that committee, committee meeting. You know, how much have you gained, and you've now taken up a lot of time for the board. Okay?
Helpful, thank you.
Okay. Allison, did you have something?
No, I was, I was like, oh.
Okay. So the role of the committee chairs is really to coordinate the work of the, of the committees. So they're going to work closely with the administrative liaison. They're going to develop the calendar and the agenda with the committee, the administrative liaison will help to lead the discussion and the focus on the committee meeting agenda items and the district goals, work with the liaison to establish those committee meeting dates, the location, the times, all of that, and keeps everybody fully appraised of what's going on. So you're going to make sure as a committee chair that those agenda items go, you know, that the agenda goes out well beforehand, as off, you know, as much time as you can give it, and then also that the minutes of the meeting go out. And if you can get it done, you know, kind of within two days or so of your committee meeting, typically, the board's not looking at their full board agenda at the same time. So it also allows board members sometimes to take a little bit more time with the committee meeting minutes and the agenda for the next meeting, then they, if they're looking at it all at the same time, they have the board agenda to go through, okay? And they're also going to be the committee, the commu- communication liaison between the committee, the board, and the superintendent. So they make sure that the committee reports, um, are completed and are distributed to everybody, communicate and anticipates any problems that might be coming up to the board president and the superintendent, arranges through the superintendent for other administrators to work with the committee if it's so needed, okay? Because that wouldn't be the board asking for somebody else, it would be the committee liaison, the administrative liaison to do that. And then sets target dates for completing committees and, and, um, tasks and reports. When I, when we were doing this format, I was a committee chair, and one of the things that I always asked when we got into the meeting is, what kind of time do we have to make decisions on these agenda items that we have on here to discuss? Because if we've only got tonight, and this is on the agenda for the next meeting, we need to focus on those things first. If we have six months for it, I'm not saying we wait six months, but we have a little bit more time. So you want to try and look at what's coming up next and what really needs to be focused on, okay? And then the committee meeting, the committee members, um, they can really help to make the committee meetings more effective by really looking at that agenda, reading the minutes, being prepared, come on time. Contact the chairperson if you're not going to be able to come, just as you would if you're a board member and you're not able to come to a board meeting. One of the things that's always nice, um, where the, your community members too, is when somebody can't come to the board meeting, and the role is being called for somebody to say, Mary Ann, Mrs. Friedman called, and she's not, she's going to be late tonight, she's running late from work, or she's not going to be able to come tonight, there's a family issue that she has to deal with, or just, she's not going to be able to come tonight even. Because that lets the community know that you guys are talking to one another. So it can either be to the board president, to the BA, or to the superintendent. And then if it's a committee meeting, it's to the chair of the committee, okay? When you stick to the agenda at a committee meeting, because sometimes, I think we all know, you know, we start to vary off, and we take detours, and we go down different roads. Really refraining from those sidebar conversations can be a big help too, keeping everybody focused, making comments that are on point, engaging in that active listening instead of, I'm listening to you so that, but I'm hearing what I want to say next, I'm focusing on what I'm going to say next, and that active listening, and then being able to request additional information if it's needed. Okay, this is tough to see, but the way this can generally work is the idea surfaces or the preliminary discussion surfaces, and administration, professional staff, board member, or community refer it to the appropriate committee. Okay, then they're going to do research, um, evaluate, make recommendations, think about how it fits the mission and your district goals, how it applies, what, what kind of long-range plan it fits into, does it fit into the budget, and what are the timelines for that? So then that's going to be discussed by that appropriate committee. They may put a report together on something, or they may just come up with the minutes again, and you'll have the committee's recommendation. Then that's going to be brought to, by the committee to the full board for discussion and for action. And they're going to report back what, what was discussed, but the full complement of what was discussed is going to be in the minutes. So it's going to be a briefer, um, kind of a report, but it will give your public enough information to know how you got to where you got to, okay? We're not trying to not be transparent, we're trying to make sure that the public gets the information they need to be able to see how you got to this decision to bring it to the board, but not the full complement of the meeting. And then the board either approves it, and then administration implements it, or if the board denies it, it can go back to the committee, or it can go to another committee if it needs to. So something doesn't necessarily just die if the board doesn't approve it. And somebody can say, and as president, you can say to the committee chair, would you like this to come back to the committee to modify it to, before you bring it back to the board, those kinds of things, okay? I know that's hard to see. Um, then, okay, so then we have the committee of the whole, which I don't think that you're interested in. So I'm just going to fly through that. It really, I mean, there are, there are benefits to that, because everybody gets the same information at the same time. However, it generally makes for very long meetings, okay? So, and most board members, and. Okay, so, and most board members, and it doesn't lessen the work, the total work of each board member. So that's why a lot of times, especially boards of nine, committees generally work better. Um, if you're a five-member board, committee of the whole is going to be the better thing to do, otherwise everybody's on multiple committees anyway. Okay? So then sometimes boards will decide that they want to have a workshop meeting and an action meeting. So the workshop meeting is one where everybody will discuss everything, they'll ask their questions. They'll ask administration to get answers to questions and then at their ne- so that's the longer meeting. And then their regular action meeting or their RAM meeting, we have COWs, Committee of Whole. We have RAMs, which are regular action meetings, we have acronyms for everything. Um, the regular action meeting would be fairly quick. Because if there was anything that the superintendent or the business administrator and the liaisons needed to get back to you on, they would do so at that meeting. And then you would be taking action. So the, the time that the public generally wants to come is to that workshop meeting where you're discussing everything and open. And then, you know, from your committee reports and things like that, and then you would have your action meeting. But you also can have one meeting a month and you have one meeting a month, right?
We have a mix.
We have a mix, um, so we have some, some months where business tends to be busier. Our two meetings a month and then the like less busy months are one meeting a month.
Yeah, okay, and that's fine too, whatever works best for you. I know, um, with a lot of really large districts, the one meeting a month can't fly because it's just too much coming at them all the time. And then they feel like they get behind on things when things need to be taken care of more immediately. So this can, you know, something like this, a workshop meeting and an action meeting can be helpful. And something for, you know, for you guys to consider as well. Um, so at this point, I was thinking Allison and Marilyn, maybe you could present, you have copies at your seat. I think they're right there. And I'm going to give this back to you, so if you have want to say anything, you can.
Thank you. That's okay, well, we have a spot for you up here too with a microphone if you'd like to join us on the dais.
All right. Do you have those slides too? I think I sent them, um, also, if you want to pull up those.
Yeah, yes.
Did you make me slides? All right, um, so when we, uh, Marion presented the three, uh, what was it, three master, three master model? We were like, this is interesting, but we have a very different structure currently and we were not um, sure that that would work for us considering, uh, what we've prioritized in our district. So, um, what you'll see in front of you is we have our current committee model. Um, we have five committees and then our ad hoc, um, negotiations committee. Um, each one of our committees is supposed to have four members. Our policy, uh, right now our bylaws say that our policy committee has to have for, um, each vice president, I'm sorry, each, um, chair of the committee as a member and the vice president is the chair of that, uh, the policy committee. Um, and so we kind of took our current committees and thought about how they could potentially be rearranged um, to kind of think about or to, uh, kind of align with some of, uh, what Marion had presented. So, um, you want to move to not the next?
Oh, I, we have to do it, oh, there's the clicker.
Um, so the first idea that seemed interesting to us was the idea of personnel being a committee of the whole. Um, since all of us have to get the information, um, anyway. Um, and personnel is one of those committees that does, um, have to remain confidential. Um, and the exchange of information is kind of, um, you know, i- is a little bit more difficult. Um, having the whole, uh, whole board here for executive session, um, to have that committee meeting at, during executive session seems like an interesting idea. Uh, we did like the idea of having three committee members per committee to leave that open. Um, because, open slot so that somebody could, um, join a committee if they were interested. Um, this model would collapse equity and excellence and policy for, uh, two reasons. One, equity and excellence and policy both often don't have things to move ahead. Um, a lot of it is discussion. Um, and the second reason would be that most policies would continue to go through, um, the, the, uh, the committees that they are, you know, aligned to, but end up with that equitable lens. Um, and so like to, the fin- finishing touches would be that equity and excellence lens. Um, we would not have the communication, um, component of personnel. Um, but what I would want or what we would like, want to consider is how, um, each of our committees would communicate. You know, more intentionally what's going on to the community.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. I thought that somebody would have a question.
Okay, yeah. Um, all right.
Without having to be asked.
The second, uh, model is the same basically, except that our equity and excellence committee would just remain, um, just equity and excellence and then policies would just run through the committees that they are aligned with. Um, and there would be no policy committee. Uh, which is how the, uh, three master model is currently. And then option number three, um, would maintain all of the same committees, except that, um, we would have three members per committee except for policy. Um, the one adjustment that we would like to consider is that, uh, perhaps policy would not need to have the chair of each committee member, but perhaps just representation from each committee. Um, which might make things a little bit more flexible in terms of the committees that people could be on. Um, most committee members, um, would have two committee mem- two committees. Um, one person would have one, so, uh, don't, you know, if you would like one. Yes, don't knock me over. Uh, and, um, except for policy, which would have four members. Um, the policies would still do like what we do now, which is go through the committees and then end up with the policy committee. Um, and then this would, oh, and then I forgot to mention with the other models, um, each committee member would have two committees because it would be the personnel, um, uh, the committee of the whole and then one other committee that they would be assigned. Right now, some of us have two and some of us have three, so it would kind of reduce, um, the workload a little bit for some of us. And then the, uh, other option is obviously is to stay the same. So that's, uh, that's also on the table. Um, and that would just remain our, you know, our committees with four and having the four chairs be the policy committee. And then I hear, I just put like a monthly timeline. Um, thank you for being more clear about the timeframes, that's very helpful. Um, so the committee share agendas would be shared with all the board members. Um, they were, board members would reach out to the chair if they had specific, um, questions or wanted to attend a committee meeting, um, of interest. The committee meetings would be held and the next agenda would be started at the end of the meeting. Um, while we do think like it would be great to be created, we do want to remind everyone that they are kind of living documents and maybe adjusted in between like when they're created at the end of the meeting and then when the meeting is held. Um, the minutes would be distributed within two days. Um, and follow-up questions would be addressed. Uh, the board notes that Dr. Cisco always sends out would include any in- an additional information needed. And then the voting meeting would include committee reports, discussion, public comments and vote. And then, um, with the workshop plus voting meetings, basically the only difference is that there would be the workshop meeting where those committee meetings would, um, those committee meetings would be, uh, reports would be shared, um, with those follow-up questions and concerns addressed. And then the action meeting, um, actually shouldn't have committee reports there because we would have done those already. Um, but in any case, that's, those are the, those are the possibilities. Good job, so if anybody would like to share any, um, any thoughts, reactions, questions, um, any other ideas, it's open to, for discussion.
I love, I love this, just how you spelled this out. My, um, my question, I love your graphics, they were very clear. I knew what it meant, um, but for option one, my question, um, maybe it's relevant for some of the others. Um, when you have the personnel committee of the whole, that would be an executive session would all, I would imagine then the, the incidence is head. So it would be maybe longer.
Yeah, it would have to be longer.
Yeah, which is fine, by the way, I'm just, um, okay. That's helpful to know. And then, you know, I think for option one too, what, what you outlined is really important, which is communication isn't on here. So when you think about like an agenda recap or it, it would have to include something around communication in order for, uh, you'd have to have some kind of systematic way to make sure we're so, you know, driving that forward, I guess.
So with the committee meeting minutes, what you could do is so when, it is on something, it doesn't sa- it doesn't sound like me. Um, so when we had committee meetings, somebody would, we would have the agenda online, you know, on, on our laptops or whatever. Remember, this goes back a long time now. And we actually did have like a laptop with us. And we would take them, we would take our minutes while we were discussing. And then what we would do is at the end of the meeting, say, okay, what, what are the points here that need to be shared at the, at the board meeting? And so somebody then, you know, whoever was taking the minutes would kind of highlight those. And then that's what we would send out, so we knew exactly what was going to be mentioned at the board meeting. And then it was agreed by everybody that that was what we were going to do. So the minutes were taken care of. The part about what was going to be discussed at the meeting, at the board meeting was taken care of. And then we would always look at what our next agenda needed to be based on what we accomplished or didn't accomplish that night. And so that would be ready to go also, so it was, it was really quite efficient.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, I have to have everybody wanting to do this though also, you know, because if everybody doesn't want to do this, then there's going to be lots of potholes along.
We, um, we send out a board bulletin after the board meetings and very often Marilyn and I are like, well, what do we want to say? Like we have to go back to the agenda, like, so it's, um, so that would be very helpful actually also for that.
I almost wonder if, if having the minutes to be shared with the board, which is, it just seems like what you're saying. But this kind of report essentially could be the structure that is shared with the public or shared in the, like, in the, um, board report to the, to the public. That, because I think sometimes when we're giving committee reports, they end up being more like a running record of a meeting. Which means it's long and there's unnecessary detail. And so I think, I like this idea because I think would focus us, but also focus us. And I think share more with the public about specific things that, that we're talking about. And I think for board members, having the minutes could be really helpful just to see a little more detail. But it would, this would focus us, I feel like, in sharing with the public.
And maybe the public wouldn't get so, in the, like, it would be easier for them to understand because they're not so in the weeds of, it's, because you're reviewing a lot, sometimes it's hard to keep track of what's being said.
If I'm sharing a running record of at, you're like, wait, what was that? No, they just said this.
And that's why sometimes like ad lib, you know, because you're in the meetings, you're like, this was the really important thing. And, and so if there was a way to systematically capture that, I think it would be really great.
I also want to comment that I think it's, you know, when we talk about the committees, because I get to be on and, and sit for all of them. The idea of the, um, workshop to workshop voting meeting combo, the, the, either one meeting a month or two meetings. If, if the two meeting a month structure is a part of what we want to continue, then I want to be really mindful of when we have our meetings. And even if we just do the one meeting month, we still have to be mindful of when we have our meetings. Because if we are going to go with the workshop to do all the committee reports and all of our committees need to re- really meet before that and thinking about our timeline of when we do that. And then same, if we do the one meeting month and we're strengthening the committee work and they might be a little bit longer, same thing on when we plan it, because it's hard to, like, that's why I always felt personnel was really complicated because I'm like, I have to, oh, this is too soon. This, you know, and, and then there's things that happen in between, all of the, most not necessarily for some of the meetings, but definitely for personnel, finance and facilities, things come up in between, I think that's where my board notes come in. But then the public gets concerned because this is the first time they're hearing of it, that's because it came up in between when a committee met and when the board met. So from my perspective, it's just very, it gets kind of complicated when every day things are happening, but you only see it at certain times or they only see it at certain times. So I'm not really sure if you have a recommendation on how that works of committees to the community to kind of mitigate a little bit of that?
If you can have, um, if you can have the committee meetings the week before the board meeting, that would probably be one of the better things to do. Because then you're, you're technically really looking at things that are on the board agenda as well as, you know, things that might need to be added, but it gives you time to be able to add those things too, so if the committee comes to a decision. Um, and that way you have all that information that then you can give to the, to the public when you're doing your recap.
Thank you.
I mean, I think part of the issue with our current structure is we have a working meeting, but maybe only two or three committees met before the working meeting. So then that means the voting meeting. Then we have two more committees that reported the voting meeting, which means that's kind of like a workshop meeting too. So then, when I first came on, I was like, wait, what's the difference between these? Because committees are sharing of both of them and, and, um, so the, all the structure stuff actually makes a lot of sense. If we keep the working meeting, I think the committees have to meet before they're to actually make it a working, like a workshop meeting.
Yeah, but then it's also so early.
Well, it's hard to coordinate.
And especially in a district this size where we wear many different hats. In a district our size, we, we, I wear many different hats, finance, facilities, transportation. Um, et cetera, and so does Christina, so oftentimes I'm not prepared for the workshop meeting. Or, you know, having this committee meeting beforehand, it's too much information, I don't have the time to gather it all and then I feel like I did a bad job.
No, but I mean, that, that's a fair point though, because if you look at the amount of things that are added, so and right now when we do our workshop meeting months, we have that and then they'll see the, the community and the board see in bold the additional items that are added. And if you look at it, a lot of it are finance and facilities, right? It's like the bill list, the secretary's report. And personnel, right, there's a lot of things that are added on and if personnel met already or finance and facilities usually meets and then now something adds on. Now the board is aware of it because they get my board notes for those, but the public necessarily isn't. And I think that's some of the feedback we've been hearing, it's like, wait, but that's the first time we're hearing of it, but the committee's been reviewing it or it's been in between, so just trying to find that balance.
Right, and then remember you're posting your agenda also for the meeting. So somebody could actually see that this is something new on the agenda and that you'll hear more about it at the meeting then.
Right.
Because it's not always possible to get everything out to the public before it comes to the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, to, to me, I mean, there's no doubt that our current structure is not ideal, I'm just curious what folks feel about. I, I have a strong
Go for it.
I don't really, I, I like to, I, I like, I think option one is a good one. Um, and option one or two, but what I, I like, I like the simplicity of it. I like the thoughtfulness of how it modifies existing systems, but makes it us, right, it takes our existing infrastructure, we've got equity and excellence as in, yeah, so anyway, for me, that feels very like custom. Yet, um, doable and, and solves for some of these issues where we're not going to have these meetings where, you know, we're not timing them quite right and it just, the inefficiency issues, that, that's how I feel, but convince me otherwise.
Yeah, I have that agree with Sarah, I do, I, I like it for the same reasons. Um, I also like the fact that equity and excellence are with policy because the policy is really what is our standard of how we, how we do things and it should always be done through an equitable lens. Um, my, I only have a question about, because, and I think it was mentioned before, but I just need more clarity on the executive session, if that is the committee of the whole, how do we fit in the disciplinary and HIB and, and all that, or would that be a later meeting or?
It would be like, we would have to start at fi- like five thirty. It would be like, we would have to start at like five thirty, like five thirty to six thirties personnel, six thirty to seven is HIB and discipline.
Now, does personnel have to be every week or is it still once a month as it?
It would be the once a month with the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And we'll see. One of the other things you could consider is pushing discipline to the equity, excellence and policy meeting. And then HIB and personnel be in, uh, committee for the whole as well. Because obviously it's through an equity and excellence, and we review it anyway. But the sort of requirement of the board is really obviously to review and approve HIBs. So something that you could do if you wanted to move that to part of a committee work, because we're looking at it already through.
Well, we're doing it in equity.
We're doing it already. It may be something to pick up to look at that. We could still continue to do the discipline report. Thank you to my amazing secretary who spends a lot of time putting it together. But putting it, you know, through that lens as well. So that might free up a little bit of the time because I heard some comments about potentially it being a longer meeting. But maybe that might take the burden off where it's HIBs and then personnel, which might help a little bit. I don't know.
So.
So it's still, so we're still really deep, going deep into the discipline work. And I would probably argue that we could go deeper because we actually have a little bit more time and we're looking at it through the equity lens versus the half hour or time that we get.
And we're not really voting on discipline.
You don't vote on discipline, no? Just the HIBs, absolutely. There's nothing that you vote on.
I think that's a great, yeah, because we covered in equity and excellence. The thing to call out is that because we have an incident issue. And like, we need really good notes from that. Like, we need like really massively good communication from that committee. So I'd say the burden on that committee is going to be pretty high.
We could all get those discipline, the same reports.
Yeah, you could still get the report.
Part of the minutes, not necessarily.
We get a link in the agenda.
Yeah.
Meeting like already happens in equity and excellence.
Yeah, I put that right. I put all the links in there or the chair could, or I could, yeah, co, co, co-chair that, uh, that link. But yeah, it's already done and you would have access and it would be in your board folder like it is now. The conversations about it would be more focused with the idea that, you know, there's always an extra space if someone wanted to join. You know, if they wanted to or ask questions about something because they could read it ahead of time. And then they say, oh, I just have some questions about some of the discipline that came in. Can you ask these during the meeting or something like that? That might help with the, yeah, with the conversation. I don't know.
I think, I mean, I think.
Just food for thought.
I think it's a great idea.
I had another thought. It might be a bad one. Maybe I just put it out there so you can all shoot it down. But, um, another thought I had was, to put equity and, uh, with curriculum instruction, because a lot of the discipline stuff is about classroom management and how those things are handled. That might make, put too much in curriculum instruction. I think that might be the worry, but then you could pull out, uh, personnel and policy, or, or you could do a different third committee possibly, or, um, or the policies shared across them like in the master. So that was one thought I had, because I think they are very interrelated. At least they're very connected in my mind. I don't know if that would function.
I had, actually I had one.
That had that.
Um, and I thought about it for a while, but, um, having been in curriculum, like, well, you're in both. The discussion in both can clearly go sixty minutes. But, you know, so I'm, I'm, I would be concerned, um, that, that it would be too much. I think also there's a philosophy underpinning, which is like equity and curriculum and instruction is one way to achieve equity and excellence. But there's a, like, to me, it almost narrows the focus of how we think about equity, maybe. I don't know.
Does it make it too narrow?
I mean, to me it does. I don't know. Because when we are in equity and excellence, we're having much more broad discussions that aren't necessarily related to curriculum instruction at all, right? So if you put them together, I think it limits the breadth of the conversation that you have as it relates to equity and excellence. But I too am in both and that, that's my, like, curriculum instruction, well, it's a timing, but it's, it's also like curriculum instruction is a thing. Equity and excellence, there's policy, there's, um, you know, climate, there's, in- incidences and behavior issues that are stemming from socio, I mean, there's all these things that are relating to like pop, like. So, you know, there's no doubt they're related and there's no doubt that a lot of our conversations are overlapping.
There are, yeah, there are a lot of things that we do send back and forth between equity and excellence and curriculum instruction. I don't know, Monique.
Yeah, I just have my hand on it because I just want to add to this conversation that what we did in the past, um, and this was more so a kind of a scheduling, way of addressing, um, the, this issue, that there is so much overlap. And there is, there are often instances where either the chair of equity and excellence, or the chair of curriculum instruction, or any member of either committee want to sit on the other committee because there are issues that, um, you know, kind of are, are clearly overlapping or impact both areas. So what we, we've done, what we did in the past was we would schedule those meetings to occur, um, kind of back to back. So, um, we've always kind of aligned CNI and equity and excellence meetings. And we found that really helpful because again, either myself as a chair or another committee member would be able to push into that curriculum, meeting and vice versa. Um, and again, that really just helped with especially specific topics in, in CNI that, um, clearly had, needed an equity lens and need to be, um, discussed through that lens. So I just want to put that out there to something we may want to think about, um, um, in the future for next year when we're scheduling.
Yeah.
Just to perhaps get back to that. Um, and it just, we, I think we did that also with, um, was it? No, it was just with E and I, uh, CNI and equity excellence. And then, um, because of the policy overlap, I think, you know, just moving to this idea of having each committee, um, get, get, get their hands on policies, that were pertinent to their area, their scope, um, really helped as well. So I just wanted to add that historical context. And then, um, I, I think since kind of Sarah, uh, shared her, um, preferred option. You know, I really, first of all, thank you Marilyn and, um, Allison for putting together these scenarios. Okay, thank you Allison, all Allison. I, I, I feel like I, you know, they're, they're so, all of them are really well put together. I, uh, I don't have a strong leaning or preference. I, I think my top, uh, initially I just thought maybe option two would be what I preferred. And perhaps that is my bias for wanting to, as an equity and excellence chair, I don't necessarily see an issue with collapsing equity and excellence, excellence and policy either. So, I mean, again, however, whichever way we decide to go with this, I would probably be okay. Um, I think I already raised just the one thing that I was thinking about and we've already touched on is just the fact that Sarah, I believe, mentioned this. Already our equity and excellence committee meetings, and I believe this is the same for CNI, um, take up a full sixty minutes most of the time. And that's, you know, just getting through our agenda items. So, um, and sometimes there is like a to be continued, right? Because we still haven't finished discussing certain items. And I don't even think it's a matter of not being efficient or, you know, getting off topic. It's just the nature of the, um, topics that we discuss. Maybe sometimes we can think about, um, you know, moving through a little bit more quickly. But, um, when we think about then at the end of these discussions, then also as a committee sitting and looking at what our agenda will be for the next meeting. Um, and before that, going through what the notes are going to be, what we're going to send out. We really have to just be mindful of the fact that that will add on. I would think, you know, that would definitely take us beyond the sixty minutes. Which again, just for historical context, I will say on average equity and excellence committee meetings used to run probably more along the seventy-five minute mark. So, um, prior to, um, I guess, uh, under the previous superintendent's, um, tenure, it was not unusual for our meetings to run over an hour. Um, I do prefer to stick to sixty minutes. I think there, you know, we can get, we need to get done in sixty minutes. But if we are thinking about this in terms of the communication, the note and the, or the agenda creation at the end of our meetings, and that we will need to just be prepared to, um, have that extra time over sixty minutes. I just can't see us functioning, um, and trying to get all that done in sixty minutes and do our due diligence around the kind of topics that we discuss.
The, the good thing, if we were to go to this three committee model, is that we only are sitting on a one committee. So if your one committee goes a little long, it's your only committee for the month.
Well, besides personnel.
Uh, right, but that's, I, I think we're here, or I think we're here in executive. If that doesn't bother me as much, it doesn't, you know, that's our, you know, is not, not additional to my, to my month. Right? That I've already allocated that night to be here in my, you know, for myself. But here, if you have one, I right now sit on three committees. So if I had one committee and it took seventy-five minutes, I'd be okay with that, right? I think it hopefully helps our administrators who are sitting in on less committees as well, you know, typically Christina or Denise. So they also have, where the meeting might go longer, um, but there's less of them. So hopefully, hopefully it's more efficient use of time.
Well, when I'm looking at these options, I thought the assumption was that we each have, first of all, yeah, kudos to you Marilyn. I, I just think like three committees, yeah, we should not have to be like sitting on three committees. Are really doing a lot and we appreciate you dearly. Um, and we want to make sure that that does not continue because it's a lot of time. Um, but in looking at these options, and I feel like they all will involve one committee plus personnel, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, correct. And then like some of us, negotiations or, you know, and anything that we might create ad hoc. But, um, but yes, most of us, but pretty much all of us, except for anybody that's involved in negotiations, except, well, yeah. Any, some of us, um, for a few months next year. Um, but then we won't have negotiations for a few years after that. So.
Right.
So it'll be just, uh, one committee plus personnel. So everyone will have two.
So let me, let me ask you this. If personnel, is personnel a, a much longer committee? That, than an hour?
It depends.
Or is it shorter?
It honestly depends on the topics. Yeah, so that we have some times where it's, um, like we're within forty-five minutes or so.
We're often less than an hour, unless like in the spring when you're looking at, uh.
Yeah, like if we do like our, when we meetings where we have our non-renewals or, um.
Particularly challenging personnel issue.
Yeah, we have some particularly challenging personnel issues, but they're not often, but, yeah.
Cause I was going to say, would it be better to have equity, e- equity, excellence and policy as a committee of the whole? And have, no. And have personnel on communication. Have HR as the separate committee, but have equity, excellence and policy where everybody is there. So whatever else, whatever other committee you're, you're on, you're able to contribute to that committee. At one, do you know what I mean? I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I guess it probably would depend on what everyone feels they, like if everyone feels, if the entire board feels strongly that they want to know about personnel, then personnel should be committed for the whole, right? But I think if everybody feels strongly about discussions around curriculum instruction, then that one, I think, right? I feel like it's whatever.
Equity and excellence as a whole, isn't that now a public meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the personnel one would not be public because of.
Cause it can't be. So there's an efficiency component.
But also the confidentiality of the discipline data that's discussed with equity and excellence would then make it.
That could put us into executive.
So it's a little tricky because there are some things in equity and excellence that can be discussed in public and some that can't. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the same really goes, holds true for personnel too, because some of those things can be discussed in public, but a lot of them can't. So it's just a question of what, you know, because if everybody wants to be able to feed into equity, excellence and policy, from curriculum instruction and from facilities and from operations, um, then that might be the better thing to do as a committee of the whole. I'm throwing it out there, but I don't have an opinion on it because.
Yeah.
Is it efficient to have that many people? Whatever you want, really. Is it efficient though to have that many people discussing the equity and excellence? I mean, if.
Yeah, no, I don't think it would be. No. I feel like it's a really productive and it, you know, the, the number. Yeah. I don't, I, yeah. Yeah, I think what's interesting about Monique's that option one or two, I agree with you, Monique, like one or two. The big difference between the two is that you've got, um, you've got policy and communication. So the question is like, how do we want to treat policy and communication?
Well, communication would be a common thing, like again, intentional, but so it's really policy.
Well, and so for option two, same with policy, right? So we, so to me, that's the decision, right? Which is like, if you want to make policy and communication run through all of them, because it's a core tenet of them, which by the way, it probably should be. Then you do option two. We just have to be very methodical about how we treat that publicly.
Right.
So i- it's just a, it's a charge on ourselves to be systematic with how we treat those two things. So. Monique, did you have something to say?
Yeah, no, uh, I just left that, lost the train of thought. Um, I guess my, my only concern though is that, uh, running, okay, so running policy through or each committee, I guess, looking at policy as pertinent to their area. That's, okay, I'm just thinking I, that removes kind of the central policy committee, who at this point is almost like a central hub, right? That distributes, right? I feel like that's ineffective. To me, I feel like that's quite effective, that we have kind of the central hub, that their sole responsibility is policy. And they're able to distribute out, stay on top of the committees to make sure that they're, you know, reviewing and discussing the policies and getting back, getting back the feedback to the policy committee in a timely fashion. Um, I actually like that model. Um, and I guess my only concern when we pull away that dedicated kind of central hub, for lack of a better term, is that we lose that, um, uh, one, um, central focus just on policy, right? That, that again, doesn't remove any of the, um, policy discussion from the, the polit, the committees that, where the discussion should happen, but it just ensures that, um, those committees are moving along as they should. And are having those discussions, um, based on the policies that are fed to them, so to speak, from the policy committee. Does that make sense? Like, I just feel like.
It does, but I don't really feel like that's how policy has been functioning. It hasn't been functioning like that. Um, because we've been meeting to review policies and, you know, we've reviewed policies in our committees. And then the policies come to policy and we look at them for the fine, you know, like to pass them on for first read. So, but we haven't like sent them out. It's Christina that's done that. The central hub, so.
That's different from, I'm sorry to cut you off. So that is different from probably the way we function perhaps two years ago, where literally it, what they were, the, the policies were germinating from the policy committee. Um, and then we would get from, let's say, for example, a policy chair who I think was Darcy, the last time I can think about the way this was working that way. Um, or Anne, maybe it's Anne, I don't know, would send out those policies to the respective committees. Like, these are the policies we need you to look at, um, and send back your, um, you know, your, your feedback, suggestions, comments, so forth.
That might be, that might be before my time. Cause when I took over, Darcy gave me the structure and she said to, here's, you know, the one thousands go here, two thousands, three thousands, et cetera. And then, so I would get them across my desk and then I'd put them on the agenda items. The piece that I was missing that I got feedback on was to loop them back into the policy committee. Cause the policy committee has specific ones that they review, I think the one thousands and two thousands. And so that was the piece that I wasn't doing, that I am doing now and have been doing for a little while is loop. So after curriculum instruction reviews, um, or equity and excellence or finance, they then go back to policy for a final look over. So, um, but if it was done in a different way where policy was disseminating, that's before my time.
Well, yeah, and you've taken on that load, you've taken on that sort of, um, responsibility, uh, it sounds, yeah, okay.
So, so long with history, I actually had coffee with Mark. We had some more conversations. So back before Darcy, there literally was nobody discussing power. There was piles of books and papers. That's, that's his perception.
Yeah.
But at this point, which is like many years later, um, Susan's out of her head. Many, many years later, um, there's, we're up to date on policy, right? I mean, thanks to the, you know, the work Christina's done, Susan's done, and I, a little bit before them as well, maybe starting from Darcy. At this point, we're only discussing the changes that are coming from stress estimate or something that might need to generate from our own. Um, like the cell phone that we begin to talk about a little bit or field trips, things that are generating from need within the district. So, but otherwise.
That's a wonderful place to be.
Right, so there, we are a really good place. So I, you know, we feel more concerned if we were where we were a few years ago and we did need a committee to, you know, stay on top of it, but, um, and we could always do an ad hoc. I mean, if, right, if there were some, we get to the point of like cell phones or something, we needed some serious time on something. We could pull together.
Yeah, so like if we went with option two and we're like, you know what, we really want to revive, rethink our cell phone policy, then we could do an ad hoc cell phone policy committee that's going to examine that over the course of a few months. You know, draft, whatever. And that's like a committed group that's very interested in that particular topic, that's willing to donate that time. Um, so that's another way that we could perhaps, you know, uh, do that if we did not, um, go with having policy uh, as part of a committee.
Yep, that makes sense. And it's all about, as to, to Marilyn's point, really maintaining this nice place that we're in. On top of policies and just making sure that it stays that way and we don't get back to where we were.
Right.
Joined. It was just so, so many policies that needed to be reviewed and updated and.
Yeah. Yeah, and like I think that that's, you know, why we're here today is to say like, well, if this is the model that we want, then we all have to be in agreement that, you know, we need to make sure that we're looking at the policies that are being put on the agendas, that we're doing the pre-work for the meeting, like, you know, we're reading our materials before we get to the committee, we're asking questions, you know, like kind of coming to that agreement that this is only going to work if we're kind of, we're all, um, I guess, playing our role, so to speak. So, you know, if we agree that we're just going to run policies through the different committees, then we're agreeing that we're all going to move those policies through the committees and kind of keep tabs on them.
Yeah.
Um, or, you know, for each other.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like it's a very explicit thing to state these on, and I think all, they could all work. It's just like, there needs to be that kind of statement upfront.
And then speaking of policy, the process here is, is, is policy connected? Because if we reach consensus here tonight, or, you know, in the, I don't know, at beyond tonight, and then the goal would be, um, policy committee is meeting. The idea of looking, we've already pulled, Susan's already pulled the policies that relate to our committee process. We have to revise the policies that relate to our committee process so that, um, our first read in January, I guess, would be new policies on today. Oh, we have our first read would be in December, so that in January our reorg could have this, our new model in place. So there is a policy component, just getting, you know, we're like on a timeline. Unless for some reason that, you know, people don't want to do that, but if we're looking to make a change, then ideally we make a change, so the policy could look at it next week and we can have a first read.
And then, um, Marian did say, just try it for six months, and if you don't like it, then you can go back. Or you can change to do something else, or you can, you know, uh, the, it, the world is our oyster.
I like that approach. I do like that approach.
So, um, with, if, let's say we were to go to something like option one or two, um, would they all be in the same week? Is that what I heard you say, Marian? That's desirable, so then you can kind of get as close to.
It can be, but however, it's best for you to work them.
Yeah, so, so one thing I would name, um, uh, is, you know, oftentimes there's issues that come up in the public that feel very urgent. And, and sometimes they need to go through this mechanism or some, through some other mechanism and I'm just, maybe this is a different conversation than this, but like when things come up that seem urgent, or we need to put them, like, how, how do you, how do you make sure they get through the right, the right channel? And if they're all like a week before, you know, the, the final meeting, it just, it makes it so maybe there's not a, if people have concerns, they're not going to be brought to public attention until, I don't know, I'm just bringing up that. It, it changes the way when a, a public member brings to a concern when it can be handled. And that just seems like part of the thing we should think about, which is like, I don't know, maybe there's a, I don't know, just throwing it out there.
So you're talking about if somebody comes up, what, somebody brings up an issue at a board meeting and then how you.
And we want to be able to say we're addressing it, and if we say we, and maybe that's what it is. We can't address it until a meeting three weeks from now, and sometimes that's kind of like a painful thing to hear.
But if it's something urgent or emergent, then it's going to have to, you know, it'll have to be dealt with and then. To the superintendent for that.
Okay.
Most of those concerns.
Yeah, most of them go to me.
Okay, so what you're saying is like, yeah, there's other things, there's, there's things that are handled through some other mechanism. And if it's not that urgent, it'll be handled through.
Right, and then sometimes you're going to refer people to the chain of command also, I hope. Which is the, you know, to put them to the, give them to the lowest level of the chain, so if it's a parent or a student issue, they want to talk to the teacher first. Then, you know, perhaps an assistant principal or a principal, then to a supervisor and assistant, do you have an assistant superintendent? Okay, so then, um, you may have, you know, coordinators or supervisors or whatever that it could go to. And then to the superintendent, and then it would come to you as the board, you're the court of last resort. But the thing to remember is that sometimes people can't get exactly what they want. They may need to understand why they can't get what they want, because most people in, in the communities, unless they've been a board member before, or they know some, but they are related to somebody who's a board member someplace else, they don't understand the complexities of some of the issues that they come to you with. You know, I want to change my, my student's bus route, you know, that's a major issue. It's, it's money, it's time, all of those things, people don't realize that. So sometimes it has to go through certain, you know, um, mechanisms in order to be able to get solved. But if something was emergent, it would need to go right to the superintendent, obviously.
That's fair, that's helpful, yeah.
All right, um, so we want to come to a consensus? It looks like we're between numbers one and two.
Can I, can I ask, like, um, as the folks on the administrative side that are kind of have to deal with this? Like, do you, what, what feel, I mean, you know, this is, this is a collaborative, we want, we want this to work and, you know, I think that's the utmost commitment, is why we're here. So I'm just curious what feels right to you.
I mean, I like models, options one and two. I think they're, um, both really good. I think to me, personnel is something that's a really big deal and I'm usually reaching out saying, I need to make sure that everyone's on board with some high-level personnel decisions, so, um, I think to help prevent the president from constantly being the middleman and calling everyone individually and whatever else we have to do on personnel matters, you know, seeing that as a committee for the whole would be helpful. I will say, I, any structure that we go with, I want to make sure that we're, we're doing right by it. Like I said, I, I struggled with the two meeting a month because to Dan's point, I just never understood. Like if we workshop something and then we're adding things and we don't workshop those things and some things we talk about here and sometimes we talk about them there and it just never seemed an efficient use of the time. Um, if we can really commit to our committees meeting, you know, a week before, getting that communication out with the agenda and, and having that flow, which I think we really could. Um, either options one or two work, work really well. Um, I think policy's in a really good spot. Um, you know, one of the things I would argue too with something like, um, you know, policy is that if policy impacts, you know, I know it comes with the number and we put it through, but something like the cellphone policy is a really good example where it might actually impact all of them. Right? Curriculum instruction would want to look at it from their lens, finance and facilities, because if we're gonna buy gondor pouches, they need to have their hands on that too, if that's going to be a, a policy that you're going to implement. So I would even argue that those policies that we implement, that either are Strauss or above and beyond Strauss, um, would go to all of them anyway, potentially if we make that decision when we look at them, saying, you know what, I actually think we should review this by all committee or something like that, so. Um, in which case equity and excellence and policy might not be needed and, and then maybe option two would work a little bit better, um.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And I think it preserves the timing, because we know being in equity and excellence, how much time we really have.
Really.
Now, we're gonna, we're gonna, some of that is going to go into personnel on committee, but I do, will say, I don't feel like we spent the time that we wanted to. Because it, there's so much in there, so I can appreciate that. If you add policy, that it would be.
Yeah, I'd like to keep the continuity of what we're doing in that, and because we're in a good shape with policy, I think it'd be really great to continue the work in committee on looking at policy and then maybe those one thousands and two thousands that would have gone to policy, we can kind of look and redistribute those or something like that, um. Or it goes to the whole board in an email or something.
Also, we don't really have to edit the, the description in the pilot.
Okay, perfect. Oh, I'll take that one for the win there, to, to help madam president here.
Um, no, I, I think that's a really good point, if we are, you're right, like if there are policies that are, we're gonna, are touching multiple um, committees regardless, then, then that makes sense. All right.
I would just add, um, well, I think I already said it, I think I'm leaning, I'm definitely leaning towards option two. Um, and I think, uh, Dr. Seska's last point, um, was well taken, um. And I wanted to say something about policies, I'm sorry, I'm not feeling the best tonight, um, but yeah, I think that's it, that's all I have on my mind at this point. But again, thank you, and, um, I'm not so strong either way, but my preference now is two. Um, but I'm curious to hear what others think between the options presented.
Nikki, what are you thinking?
There's no wrong answer, Nikki. We're all pretty much in agreement, which is kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really set on the whole personnel committee as a whole, and that, that's like my favorite thing.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I, my only concern with policy not being an actual committee is forgetting about it. And we don't want things to pile up, so I don't know if there's like a point person who would be, like, hey, this policy came in, we need to run it through the other committees. I am the committee of the one.
Well, and what's been really great, and I, can I just interject here, what's been really helpful, Dr. Seska, now that you've, you've been doing that? Um, and you tie it right into the committee agendas, so. Again, I will admit, me as a committee, myself as a committee chair, I'm not going to look for like what policy, what policies exactly. You know, so it's really helpful that you've, you've taken that on, appreciate, much appreciated. Um, and so, yeah, I think that alleviates the concern that I kind of raised, um, about this whole idea of, well, who's going to be that central, um, that central hub.
Yeah, and if I'm on, and I do attend all the committees, would still continue to do that if something came up. So, you know, we had talked about grading policy, which isn't a Strauss update, but it was something that actually, we internally, it was our regulation, we're like, oh, this is nineteen ninety-two was the last time it was updated and we've since changed it. And I'm like, okay, we've got to run it through curriculum instruction and equity and excellence and we're, we're talking about it, so our policy's in reg, so, you know, and if someone, if it comes up from the board member to, hey, we should look at this policy, we've done that before, I usually pull them, get them as Google Docs, get them prepared for commenting and then send them out, so I, I think that has been working really, really well, and I think it takes the burden off of the board to have to look for those things or ask for them.
Also, the, the most recent ones we've worked on have been coming from the, the central, either central leadership team or your leadership teams, you know, in the buildings. So you're bringing them because the high school principal, you know, realized that X, Y, and Z was a problem, so it was coming from the school, so it had to come through you.
Yep.
You know, the lunch, the lunch one we did, which was an easy one, but it came from the buildings where they, we realized policy was not, in fact, what we were doing in that building, so. This does, there's no way around it.
Policy always flows through me, so I think I'm a good central point person, if for some reason, like in the next couple of months, that structure isn't continuing to work for whatever reason, we can always, we can add it or revisit it or whatever, but, um, I, I, I mean, I'm gonna say that I don't think that there's been any problem with, with our policy work, with, with the way we've been doing it, so that's why I particularly like number two.
Marian's question, do we, we don't vote on this at this point, we're just, what's?
No action taken, no action.
Go ahead and.
Just a workshop meeting.
We are workshop in this.
Yeah, so at your, at your next meeting, you can, you can take a vote on which one you would like to do.
Yeah.
Based on power, because we'll have a policy.
And then we also mentioned, I like, I liked the idea of discipline going through the equity and excellence.
Okay.
Committee, and I don't know if that is a separate, like, because equity and excellence talks about discipline, correct?
Absolutely.
Uh, so would that not be the natural way to, like, place to put discipline?
Yeah, I don't think, but that's not in our, I don't think that's in the policy or anything like that, that was just something I think that was brought up before my time, so that's not anything here. It's just more of a practice than a policy, so we can decide how we want to do that practice. We could try it one way and if it's not working, we could always go back with something too.
Well, I, I'm not sure, hi, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what, what you mean, because we already are, so what equity and excellence does now, are you saying taking what?
I think Nikki was just asking if discipline's already discussed in equity and excellence.
During an executive session, um, it would definitely, it would be like, you know, five-hour meeting. If hip, we actually do vote on hips, but we don't vote on discipline.
So that would happen publicly in.
Not have that as part of an executive function.
Makes sense.
Executive, executive session. My last thing.
By a certain time, we all lose our executive function skill.
One, one other, I, I'm just thinking about timeline a little bit between the committee meetings. If the committee meetings meet, if the committees meet the week before, I'm just thinking about agendas, getting out minutes, and then the agenda for the voting meeting, it might, it might make sense to meet the week before that. Uh, just to give the two days for the minutes to be written up, to give the time for that to be put on the agenda and that kind of thing. If it's, if you meet the Thursday before the Monday, it's not gonna.
Yeah, you're right.
Typically, our voting meeting is the fourth Monday of the month, so perhaps all committee meetings should be the second. Facilities is Tuesday, I think you have personnel before finance.
Yeah.
Tuesdays, uh, it could be the same day of the second week.
And I, yeah, I like the idea of having C and, uh, the curriculum instruction and equity and excellence back to back if you're, if you're. That would be great. Um, and that would be it.
Yeah, we just have to make sure the timing, because what happens, uh, for those who, if there's anybody watching out, out in the public there, um, is during reorg, one person, thank you, during reorg, um, what we do is we establish the committees.
Yeah.
And then what happens after that is it comes back to my office and then we schedule those meetings, so I usually work with each chair to say, when would you like to meet and at what time? So we just have to be mindful, I don't, I'm flexible, my schedule is incredibly flexible, I have no problem with the back-to-back. I didn't mind it when we had it before, the things that change are just because people's schedules change and we're not, some people aren't available or whatever, so. Um, you know, I think that's just something that I want to take into consideration.
Yeah, and I think as long as we kind of prioritize, like we make this something that we want to do, you know, we're intentional about it.
Yep.
Hopefully make it work.
The one thing I would say is that, like, I really like, I really like these suggestions and this move. Just communication is an area where we struggle, and I know I've said this already, but like, in the write-up notes, it's like such, it's maybe has to be a requirement that we have some communication implication or some.
Yes, I think so. Yeah, when I was thinking about how, um, our, like, you know, committee reports or agenda or whatever would be structured, I'm like thinking about a communication to the public area.
Yeah.
Um, uh, which not only is for the, you know, the, the report, but which could be for the report out, right? But could be for the board bulletin, um, and I think could be in conversation, like, well, what are the things that we want to share about? Like these ongoing discussions that we're having, um, and what we're pushing through at this meeting. Um, because there's, you know, I mean, we, you guys had the, um, strategic planning session and we're speaking about a lot of decisions that were made, but they, the people that attended had no idea.
Decisions were made, right?
So it's, um, you know, to be really, really intentional about, you know, what we're going to communicate um, from these areas, um, except for personnel, from these areas.
Yeah, and by the way, what you just laid out, I think, is like absolutely going to be an improvement, because if you have like notes and then there's like a communication section of like, what matters?
Right.
We're naturally going to be doing that and that can be repurposed in other ways, and so I, I feel very confident about that, as long as that's ingrained into the follow-up, you know.
Yeah, I just feel like creating something like this, it might not be exactly like this, but some template, that, minutes and then this kind of.
It would, would formalize it too, because we each do minutes differently.
Yeah, that would be good too, yeah.
Template is a good idea.
And you can modify that however you would like to.
I would say, and this is Monique here, I would say I don't even like to use the phrase minutes in my, because I really do not, I cannot attend, be in the discussion, be engaged, cheer the meeting, and take the minute, so I am very clear about saying I take notes. Yeah, but they are not, and I do think the public appreciates, um, and I know sometimes our reports, especially equity and excellence are lengthy because of the types of topics that we are discussing and the discussions we have, and the notes are lengthy, but I think the, and I know, I should say, I know it's just from feedback that I've gotten, that the public appreciates, um, the level of detail that we include when we're reporting out, um, the meeting notes, because, um, they feel like they're really getting good insight into those, um, you know, into those important discussions that we're having, so I think, um, whether we're sep, I like the idea of separating out, like what are our, what are our key bullet points in the meeting as we, that we want to communicate, but also recognizing sometimes that what we may find to be the key points we want to communicate may not always, there may be other points, right? And there are other nuggets in the discussion that members of the public may value and appreciate as key, um, highlights from the discussion, right? So there's kind of different perspectives.
Can I just, that can, can I, silly point of clarification, these would be public though, now, no, they're still, okay.
No, they're, so they're not, yeah, not public.
Good to know.
What's public is what we say.
Yeah, yeah, like I think that that's an important point, um, you know, that what we're trying to establish is clear communication about things that go from discussion to action.
Yeah.
Um, so picking up on those key points, um, you know, even though there are things that are, they're, they're being discussed in committee that are being flagged now, um, for potential decisions later on, knowing that these are going to surface again. Um, because we want to establish that, uh, you know, chain for the public, so that when, if a decision is made, you know, for example, like the cellphone discussion, if a decision is. you know, for example, like the cell phone discussion, if a decision is made, and you know, they, they, we can backtrack and show how, you know, how the decision has been discussed over time.
That makes sense.
Okay. I think we are finished.
Okay.
And we're all okay with the one meeting a month, except for budget, I think it's two meetings, right?
Okay, I didn't hear, I'm sorry. Sorry, it's my conversation, I know we're not allowed to have those.
So it would be the one, the committee meetings, the second weekend of the month. The voting meeting, the last Monday of the month.
Yep.
Except for budget season, when you have the hearing, right? Is it called?
So that would be a special, special public meeting for the budget only.
All right.
Okay.
All right, all right, I'm going to move to adjourn. All in favor?
Thank you, Marion, we appreciate it, thank you.